Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting for Monday, March 11th, 2024. Please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Kate?
Kathleen Amroth.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins. John Noons.
Yep.
Thank you. So this meeting is, yeah, sorry. Folks can, I just want to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded. And if you are not here, perhaps you're watching us livestream on DH TV Media and DCTV as it's being recorded. To be rebroadcast on DCTV, Channel 9, on Wednesdays and Thursdays, 5:00, Friday at 6:00 a.m., Saturday at 8:00 a.m., and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Also rebroadcast on Channel 18, on Mondays and Saturdays at noon, and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. To begin this meeting, we open with public comment. And so if anyone in the audience is interested in making a comment on any items on tonight's agenda, we welcome you to do so by stating your name and making your comments brief. Don't run. So hearing none. I'm going to move it to the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have in our packet the February 12th, 2024, minutes for our review. And so I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Ms. Coughlin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four, zero. Unanimous. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire for our consent agenda for DHS Youth and Government Club to attend Model Government Conference.
Excellent. So we're excited that our students have this opportunity to participate in a conference that is being held in Boston. They'll be going to Beacon Hill. They'll be staying actually at a Beacon Hill Hotel. There are four students who participate in the government, the Youth and Government Student Activities Club here at the high school, and they'll be attending this conference, of course, with your approval with Ms. O'Neil. And it sounds like it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for them to spend some time in Boston and to engage more authentically with the world of politics and government. So we're recommending that you approve this trip, and the students will likely have a wonderful experience.
Excellent. Any discussion? Any comments?
No, sounds good. Looks like a good trip.
Great.
I'll make a motion that we approve the DHS Youth and Government Club to attend the Model Government Conference in Boston, March of '24.
And I'll second.
Great. We have a motion, Mr. Oliver, a second by Ms. Coughlin. Any further discussion?
Maybe they can teach our people up there some things.
Yeah, right? Do a gap analysis of what's not working. Perfect. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimous, four, zero. Next, I'm going to also turn it over to you, Dr. Saban McGuire, to introduce our presentation.
And I'm going to invite the middle school folks up to the podium. I know there's a group here that are excited about sharing with you the work that they've been doing for quite, quite a bit of time now. We're renovating the courtyard, and I know they have a video put together for you that demonstrates how they've really transformed this space into something that is quite beautiful.
You can also come here and gift as well.
Oh, oh, great.
Nice.
So good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for us to put a spotlight on our gardening club.
I just want to make sure I introduce you, Mr. Rossi.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, and everybody knows Mr. Rossi. It's not like he really needs to be introduced, but Mr. Rossi, our middle school principal.
I appreciate that. So I'll start over again. So good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to put a spotlight on our gardening club, which is one of our after-school program offerings. Tonight, we really wanted to put a focus on the gardening club's vision and what they've created and what was an empty courtyard space. In attendance from the club tonight, we have Oliver Gonzalez, we have Temple Mitchell, and we have Lori Helstrom. We did create a short video to present our journey and what has been created, and then we look forward to answering any questions you may have. So now comes the technical part. Mr. Galishaw, you think you can help me out with this? Yeah. Ooh, perfect. Look at you.
And move the mouse.
The audio doesn't come in for a little bit.
Yeah. You got it, Mr.?
It'll come in.
Parrot?
Yep. It'll take a little bit. He's fine. He's fine.
Clearly describe our process and how we've come to our decisions. I want people to know that we have scrutinized every line item. We've explored what we think are innovative solutions to the challenges that we face. And we take this process very seriously. And so, we are going to, Mr. Kylie's going to go through sort of the timeline, the history, if you will, and talk about where we are, where we are presently.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. So, since we've presented this budget now several times to you all, the presentation is 29 slides. We're gonna jump ahead to the 20th slide. The first 20 have not changed since we last presented and since we presented the time before that. But the 20th slide, I think, is a good place to start. It's titled Budget Timeline, and basically, it is, takes us through the steps that got us to where we are today. Our starting point in the fiscal year 25 budget process was really finding that the town's allocation for our funding would be limited to 3% over the fiscal year 24 budget. So, we immediately knew that that was gonna be a problem. The expiration of the ESER funds, as well as a expected increase at the time of transportation costs, which actually came in higher than what we originally expected, labor costs that were gonna be more than 3%, as well as other costs like legal services, special education tuition, all things that we knew were going to be, push us over that 3% that was gonna be offered by the town. So, on December 11th, though, we made our proposal, which was a needs-based proposal. We attempted to maintain services as best we could, but there were cuts included in our original budget proposal on December 11th. We made an effort, as you may recall, to try and get this together as early as possible in preparation for the conversations that needed to be had, both with you folks, but with the town portion of government as well. So, that December 11th proposal contemplated our needs-based requests, and it did remove curriculum, materials, and technology replacement to school choice funding. That's where we were on December 11th, 5.3% increase. Then, following that presentation, discussion started regarding a potential override, and how that would be, how that discussion would occur, and what venues, and we had a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, in which we talked about that on January 8th. We had two meetings with them, but the second one was on January 8th. And at that point, the town side of government did not have any cuts in their budget plans. So, they had asked that we build it, build back in any cuts, because we wanted to come from a same starting point, which did make sense at the time. So, we did. And we came to that meeting with a 6% budget increase that you'll see on the fourth line down there. And now, we're back today presenting a 3% budget increase. So, on January 8th, you voted to utilize school choice funds to buffer the gap. And we have. We've allocated 1.8, more than $1.8 million of funding into school choice for fiscal year 24. But there are other things that we've had to do in this process to make adjustments. So, we'll highlight those and go through them. Really, the options that we had in place were use the school choice funds until they run out, look at any other possible funding that we possess to bridge the gap, or to make reductions. We've had to do all three of those things in this process, so we'll go through them. The first thing was, okay, what are we going to move to school choice? What makes the most sense to move to school choice? We had a significant amount of money that needed to be, you know, needed to be shifted there. We decided that the ESER positions that had been built back into the budget, so the ESER positions that were gonna be carried forward, made a lot of sense to move those to school choice. They were already funded by a temporary source. They were gonna continue to be funded by a temporary source at this point in time. So, you know, we're also contemplating the potential for another override discussion a year or two years down the road, and we need to, you know, have an organized way of thinking about what, you know, what the discussion points would be for that override. So, we moved all of those items there. The behavioral specialist was a new position that had been proposed in the budget, and as a result, that was a logical move into school choice. The curriculum materials and the technology, you had already actually voted to do that. So, we incorporated those in. This would result in $1.3 million being allocated to the school choice account. We'll take a look at what that means here. So, sorry, the numbers are kind of small from a distance, but what I'll say is that this includes all of the things that we currently do out of school choice, which are about $500,000, the technology, the curriculum materials, the ESER positions, the behavioral position, and really just attempting to fund as much as we could for this time with one-time money. So, remember, this is all savings. This isn't annual revenue in school choice. This is savings as a result of the ESER grants that the district received, and in lieu of school choice spending, we spent those ESER funds. So, I'm glad we have it. It's there. It's gonna support these positions for a year. It can at least partially support things for another year, but then the savings will definitely be gone. And depending on the decisions that we make in FY '26, it might not fund everything in FY '26. So, we have about $700,000, just under $700,000 in revenue in school choice annually. So, we're, you know, we've got $1.8 million in expenses planned. So, that's gonna be, you know, a temporary measure, obviously. So, we also looked at other sources. We have a few things. It's relatively, relatively small in proportion, but a few things that we've been able to allocate to ESER funds. So, ESER funds are expiring September 30th. So, it has to be things that'll happen before then, like summer school. Great, great thing to spend the money on. So, we've allocated that. We've also looked at the Atlas Transition Program, which needs additional funding. We're hoping to be able to front-load some of their needs and try and get those in the door before September 30th. That's gonna be a little tricky, but we're doing the best we can with that. And we also, I think, got a little creative, and we're going to be increasing a maintenance position from .5 to 1.0, and that's gonna be coming through the School Lunch Revolving account, which is actually the most healthy part of our operation right now, both in terms of the food that we serve, right? It's healthy. But also, the funding because of the state's decision to, you know, for universal meals for kids. So, that, those are things that we've shifted from other sources. Yes, Mr. Oliver?
Just ask a question since we're talking about other sources. Can you, we just explain to the committee or explain to myself, how, does the school department see anything from Medicaid billing?
We don't. Actually, it's a good question. It was a good question. Last week, at the family forum, there was a question regarding that, and I did address it then. So, we do receive some funding in that one of the positions that, so we have one secretarial position that is funded through Medicaid technically, although the town does include that on our budget in terms of the Schedule A annual budget. So, I've always pushed back and said, no, that's not part of our budget, but it's in their numbers, so it's actually kind of in our numbers, too. So, we indirectly have some support for one position. We, last year, $257,000 we received from Medicaid, and $40-some thousand coming back our way, so.
Towards the school department, the $47,000 towards the school department.
Yeah. Now, that money goes to the general fund and is distributed, you know, as part of general fund revenues in the budget process for the town. So, it's not to say that we don't see some portion of that at some point, but either through the operating budget or through capital improvement plan requests, but in terms of direct, directly, no, we don't, we don't receive anything else. There is no requirement by law that we do. It would require appropriation at town meeting, so specific appropriation is subject to that. So, and there is no agreement in place otherwise, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes?
But while you're on that.
Yeah.
It does seem to me that we're providing services to the students. So, it comes out of the school budget, and then when it's reimbursed by the state, it goes to the town budget, and we've spent the money. So, we're not entirely reimbursed for those services given to the students. So, that seems to me a little odd, and I understand that many towns do it that way, but to me, it doesn't seem particularly fair. So, there is a possibility that perhaps the town would be willing to give us more?
I don't know. We could have that conversation with them. Yeah. Have that conversation. There is no requirement that they do so. Yes, we are the generator of the revenue.
That's just an interesting point.
Yeah.
So, we get to the hard part here. So, our primary focus, when we were looking at reductions, was attrition whenever possible. So, retirements, resignations, and so forth. I can say that these reductions will not all be through attrition, for sure. The ESER nurse position was hired during the pandemic, so we're proposing a return to pre-ESER staffing levels in the nursing department of eight nurses. The ESER teachers at the middle school were originally, well, were hired as one-year positions. One of those, though, has been renewed for two years, and, but those positions will be eliminated as part of this proposal. The biggest impact on the elementary level will be the shift of the Cushman kindergarten classrooms to the DeMello School, making the DeMello School a K-5. You know, as part of that shift, we're proposing reducing three classrooms at the elementary level for next year. So, it's sort of to be determined at this point if that will, if those will be attrition-related or not, but that is part of our proposal. In terms of what that means for the schools, obviously, being a K-5 school at DeMello would be more like the other schools. The Cushman School would only house preschool next year. Class size would average 21 students in every one of those schools. Just happens to work out almost exactly the same for each of those schools next year. So, that would be where we would be with those changes. We expect the middle school and high school teacher positions to be through attrition. The elementary specialist teaching position is due to retirement. And the next two positions, the secretary to the superintendent and the middle school secretary position, are due to resignations. So, these reductions would amount to further $700,000 reduction in our budget. At this point, we know that five of those positions are through attrition, but there may be additional attrition. We're not sure at this point. So, this slide is kind of a summary slide of what are the things. We haven't changed a whole lot in the budget, as much as we've been back and forth. Those reductions are the biggest difference, obviously, from going from where we were to the 3%. The speech and language pathologist position, that was an SLPA position, really just, both of these, the special education teacher at Quinn as well, really just in relation to meeting students' needs and our ability to do so in a appropriate manner. We've built both of those positions into the budget. The other positions removed from, removed from the budget to other sources are things that we've talked about. So, behavioral specialists, the ESER positions, the instructional materials, the technology replacement, the Atlas program, the high school teacher position, which will be funded, a partial position will be funded through school choice next year, and maintenance position. So, those will all be removed to other sources. So, this is sort of how our budget looks in terms of proportions for next year. We've looked at this a few times. It actually proportionally has not changed significantly. So, 75% of our budget would be instructional costs. That would include things, teachers, principals, counselors, mental health supports, education support professionals, substitutes, classroom, any other classroom staff, technology, professional development, instructional materials, all those, all those things. Some special education services would be in, most would be in this section. That's 75% of our budget. The next biggest piece is the other services piece at 12%, which is transportation, athletics, music, nursing, other student activities. Maintenance and utilities would be 7% of our budget. Out-of-district tuitions make up 4%, and then administration makes up 2%. So, this would be a total proposal of $53,159,839, which looks like, oh, yeah, looks like this. So, the bottom line, the second from the bottom line there is the 3% increase. It's a little more than what the town allocated to us, very little. It's $13,000 and change more than what they're allocating as 3%. I'm assuming that's not gonna be a major problem, I hope, given the scope of what we're, what we're being asked to do. We did, again, allocate an additional $1.3 million to school choice. That makes up another 2.6, you know? So, really, it's a significant investment, and that money is one-time money. So, we're pushing this problem off for a year, maybe two at best, but it's still gonna be a problem, and there's, you know, a lot of, a lot of work that we're gonna have to do to solve it between now and when the time comes to do that, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Yes, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Kylie. I appreciate the, what is, the third rendition of the budget, the fourth rendition, wherever we're at now. Just a couple of points that I, I think it's important to make, that at the joint meeting that we had last month or the month before, I lose track of time, that, you know, there was some discussion about right-sizeing the school district from the Finance Committee and voting out school choice. I think it's important to note that we're looking at using a total, besides positions, if I'm looking at this for FY '25, $1.8 million in school choice funds. If we did not have 1.8, if we did not have school choice, our budget and our district would be devastated, if we had to cut an additional $1.8 million out of it. So, for the naysayers who think, you know, that we need to vote it out, I am certainly a proponent far, and I think it's gonna save, save our tukus for FY '25, at the very least, probably FY '26 as well. I think it's also important to note that when we use school choice funds, which we know is from year to year, based on what the school committee vote would be, it's essentially one-time revenues. If you were to go and look at the Town of Dartmouth's own financial policies, those financial policies would state that we should not be using one-time revenues to fund reoccurring charges. So, we are violating the Town of Dartmouth's own financial policies by using this money from school choice, but we do not have any alternative. The town has not given us any alternative, and at this point in time, this is what we have to do. So, we need, we have a structural deficit. At some point in time, it's gonna come a reckoning day. It won't be this year. It probably won't be next year, but at some point, this is gonna happen. It's certainly disheartening that we have to cut those positions, the, around the $700,000 that you had mentioned, worth of the reductions, the ESER nurses, the middle school teachers, and while some of them may be through attrition, others may not. So, I think it's safe to say that our needs are, and I'm preaching to the choir for, I think, looking into the audience, that our students' needs are continually increasing. I do recognize and understand that our enrollment is down, so, you know, that's something to look at for sure. But at the end of the day, I think this is what you've done, Mr. Kylie, is really put us down to bare bones as far as what we can, how we can offer a, continue to offer a incredible education for the students in Dartmouth at the very lowest minimum rock-bottom pricing. And I don't see it getting any lower than this, and I certainly hope that the town doesn't have any problems with an extra $13,000. That's all I have for right now.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to contribute?
Sure. So, all the slides that we skipped from the two other iterations of the budget, they just emphasize the fact that we already spend less than state averages, than the DART averages. Our spending per pupil, our salaries for teacher, the amount we spend on administration is already lower than everyone else. By getting rid of any position, we are not helping our students. And as Mr. Oliver says, you know, this is kicking it down the can, the can down the road one year, perhaps two. I don't think it can go two years, because we don't have the money for that, and it would mean cutting more positions. I think our class sizes, if we can keep them at 21, is good. I would be happier if they were at 20 or 19, and you can't do that with letting people go. So, I hope the greater community understands that we will be asking for money in the future, and we do that after looking at every line item and thinking about the students' best interests.
Thank you, Beth. Mr. Newns?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kylie, Dr. Saban McGuire, for this. I kind of, I gotta agree with Chris about violating the town policy with, yeah, but we kind of did it this year also, this current fiscal year, with the money we took for technology and supplies type of deal. I mean, I think we've been, you know, the Finance Committee and, you know, some of the town fathers were a little upset because we had $2 million in there. Well, I'm glad we did, because we had the free money. So, use free money before you use your own. That's, you know, my adage has always been, type of deal, because other than that, we would be in trouble. We're kicking, Beth, we're kicking the can down the road. There is no doubt about it. I mean, but if you go back and look at what we're getting from the state, okay, and that's been my gripe for a number of years, a lot of years, sitting here, I mean, if we had round figures, we're 2,000, we're 2,200, but if you use $2,000, 3,000 students, and I know, again, it's a little bit more, it's $6 million, we're not having this discussion. We've got everybody here and, you know, all the bells and whistles that we need, you know? We end up, you know, in good shape. We are really gonna have to work hard at our quality education for all, you know, that we do. Also, to remember that, you know, yeah, maybe it's a good thing, and I was not a happy camper when Mr. Kylie in September was talking about putting a budget out in December and that type of deal, and glad we did, and I will do the mayor coupas on that, because, boy. But the problem we have here is, you know, we still don't know where the state is, though they're crying, they're starting to cry poverty now. So, I'm not sure what they're gonna do later on, but I applaud our central office staff and, you know, all the administrators and staff, everyone out there for trying to, trying to make this work. Quick question, do we know what the town is doing budget-wise?
They have not presented yet.
They haven't said anything about what, okay.
I know, I know that tonight, at the Select Board meeting, they were going to have a discussion regarding health insurance, making some effort to adjust health insurance, but, but no, they haven't presented their budget.
I'm just curious. I mean, it's, it is what it is, so. Thank you for everything. Much appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, I, my colleagues really said it all. It's not the place we want it to be, but I do, you know, applaud your effort for, you know, constantly iterating on this budget and presenting, or thoughtfully meeting to discuss, you know, the, any, any decrease to what we ask for, because what we're asking for aren't needs-based. They're not bells and whistles and all of that, but, so, any decrease from our original ask is, is not good, but the effort that you took to, you know, think about some of these positions through attrition, I really appreciate that, but it's just not a good place to be. Where do we go next in terms of our deliberation on what's presented? What are your hopes, your expectations?
So, on the 25th, we'll have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And then, the hope would be that at the first meeting in April, the school committee votes on the budget. In that time, the Finance Committee, I think, would like to meet with us on April 4th, I believe. Yeah, April 4th. That'll be before the school committee votes on the budget, of course, but.
What is the expectations of that meeting?
I would assume it will be their opportunity to ask questions about our budget. They've already had a couple of opportunities, but.
Get into the weeds that they get too far grown into.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not much left to talk about, unfortunately. That's, that's the reality.
I think we're as, we're being as transparent as possible.
To that point, remind me, does the proposed budget get posted on your website?
Yeah, tomorrow morning. It's ready to go.
So that the community can kind of look at it and.
Yep. It's 107 pages. Got all the detail.
Fun meeting.
Yep.
Get your highlighter out.
Yep. First thing tomorrow morning, but hopefully by about 8:15, we'll have it up there.
Okay.
Please don't hold us to the 8:15.
Well, that's what I'm shooting for.
You know what I'm saying?
He's saying 8:15. It'll probably be up there at 7:30.
We'll try.
Thank you for this. Any other further comments? Noon's in the.
Just to jump ahead to the, they've been meeting at 4 o'clock lately.
It's a four, at least what I have. It's a four, at least what I have currently is a tentative April 4th at 4 o'clock. I don't, that could change, and if it does, I'll obviously let everybody know, but tentatively, that's, that looks like the Finance Committee's schedule.
I just put it online, thank you.
And is.
It's okay.
Mr. Oliver, okay, just before I, Mr. Oliver, is that, do they want to meet with us as a committee at 4?
No, so typically, the Finance Committee, you know, certainly you'd all be welcome. If you do intend to attend that meeting, we'll post the meeting.
Okay.
Although I don't think we'd be deliberating during, you know, during that at all. Dr. Saber McGuire and myself will attend and discuss the budget with them, but be happy to have some support.
Do they broadcast their meetings?
I think they do, yeah.
Yeah, they, I'm not sure if they're live, but they do.
But they record them and then they post them?
They're on for DCTV, Channel 18.
I couldn't make a 4 o'clock.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna be a broken record for the next couple of months here while, through the budget season, is that this town, the residents of this town are going to need to make a decision in the near future as to what kind of school system they want for their kids, for their grandchildren, for their neighbors, for their friends, because this is unsustainable and something needs to be done with an override. So, at some point in time, everyone's going to need to make a decision. And then we're going to put it out to the voters and we're going to let the people of this town decide what kind of school system they want in Dartmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver, for making that point. Thank you, thank you very much. Well, with that, now we're shifting into old business, which is a discussion which we did have. I don't know if anyone has any further comments to make or questions to ask. If not, I will turn it over to Dr. Saber McGuire for superintendent's update.
Great. First, you know, just to sort of segue into this part of the agenda, I just want to say that we did send a letter out to our faculty and staff, we shared it with the School Committee. And today, when we look at this budget, for some, it may appear that we have minimized the impact on the school district, but I think we need to be really clear here, there were people affected by the decisions that were made, real people on the end of decisions. And although, you know, we believe these are the decisions that we need to make, we want to acknowledge that regardless, this is going to have impact on the school district. I mean, these people are folks that work in schools, have friends, have relationships in the community, have relationships with students. And so, I say that not because I think that we're, you know, that we're not making the right decisions at this point, but because when I listen to what you had just said, Mr. Oliver, I think it's important to look at that long list of S R positions that we are going to be funding moving forward for the 25, 24, 25 school year. And imagine that we didn't have that school choice money to depend on. Right now, we would be having a really different conversation that I believe would be not just harmful to the school district, but quite likely devastating to the school district. And so, I think having these conversations early and often and being a broken record is really important, so. And at the same time, again, appreciate everybody out in the schools. We've had great support from our Teachers Union, and when I mean, when I say that, I mean that, you know, not that they're agreeing with everything, all of our decisions, but we are working together and we're going to continue to do that. So, now I'm going to segue into some, what I think is some good news, because there are lots of great things happening in the Dartmouth schools as always. So, and I also want to acknowledge what I think most educators would appreciate and agree with, and it's that March tends to be one of our most challenging months in our field. I don't know, I can't exactly tell you why, but I can tell you that regardless of whether it's not, I've been, whatever role I've been in, March is the month. It's the month that we work to get through, in a good way, but there's lots of fun things happening. For instance, it's, you know, the start of getting ready for MCAS, and everybody loves to hear that. And so, I think it's important for the public, for families to be tuning in, listening, because I know the schools are sending out information. There are infrastructure trials that I know Mr. Galish Shaw is working with his, with the instructional technology coaches, with the school admin, with our teachers out there to make sure that the schools are well-prepared to begin the process of the actual testing that's going to take place. I want to also mention that preschool registration is happening right now, and I mention that because I think that people do need to pay attention. Our online portal is open and preschool registra, not registration, I'm sorry, registration for the lottery, just to be clear, that will take place up until this Friday. So, if that's something that you're hearing and you're interested in, you're going to want to make sure that you get that done before Friday. I also want to mention, and I'm going to be inviting Ms. Dinesio and Mrs. Redlon to one of our future meetings, probably in April, to talk about early childhood here in Dartmouth and to really clarify some of the purposes for which pre-K exists here in Dartmouth. I think that everybody knows, but I think we need to connect to the reality that school districts are required by law to ensure that developmentally appropriate early childhood services are available. And that's why pre-K exists here in Dartmouth. And we'll talk more about that through a presentation, again, that Mrs. Dinesio and Mrs. Redlon will do in April, just to clarify the purposes of, and we love that we have peers, we need them, they're incredibly important to providing role models, to some of our needy, not neediest, that's the students who are, you know, need that, exactly. And so, we're going to talk more about that. Kindergarten registration is open, as we discussed at our family forum. If you have a kindergarten-aged child who is going to be five before September 1st, 2024, then you need to register them as soon as possible. You heard us talk about this at the forum. This really does assist us in planning to ensure that if we do need to make decisions regarding kindergarten, enrollment, class size, et cetera, that we have enough information to be able to do that in a way that is appropriate for our incoming kindergarten class. I forget the exact year of this kindergarten class for a year of graduation. I don't know if anyone knows off the top of their head, but it's pretty incredible to think about. Anybody do the math?
I didn't. Kylie was close.
38?
2038.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, so that's really going to happen. So, as far as entry planning, I mentioned that at every meeting, I look forward to the reporting phase, and we're doing good work and moving along in this process. And what I'm really excited about is this partnership that we've gotten into with Teaching Learning Alliance, because I can see the benefit that it's going to have to us in the long run when we start working with multiple stakeholder groups. As far as HR is concerned, a reminder that we, and we expect to do this this week, we will be advertising for the position of Early Childhood Director, so that should be, that job ad should be out by the end of the week. You know, I'm always going to say education support professionals, we are always in need of those folks to help support our classrooms, and I know you know I'm going to say substitutes because it's just important to say. So, for those folks to think there's no way, they could still need substitutes in March, actually, we are probably more in need of substitutes from here till the end of the year than you might expect. And I always want to just thank the staff at Central Office, Kate and, you know, all the work that she does and other folks there to get people on board as quickly as possible. As far as climate and culture, important, I want to continue commending all the wonderful accomplishments of our Dartmouth students. I did have the opportunity, along we were together, Mrs. Amaral, to watch the girls play. I thought it was, you know, that was a fierce competition, it was very stressful, I'm sure much more for them than us. And then, of course, they didn't come away with the win, but what we could see, we were really proud of them, and I thought they handled defeat with a lot of grace, and sometimes that's where you really see sportsmanship and what students have learned through participating in sports becomes really clear. So, also, we had Hunter Madsen, who broke the all-time scoring record. He's a basketball player, in case you didn't know, and that is quite a celebration here in Dartmouth, although I'm not sure whose record he broke, and I'm not sure how they might feel about that, but I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll be happy for Hunter. So, no doubt that Mr. Newns has something to share about the competition for indoor percussion and color guard. That happened last week, so I'm not going to steal his thunder. I know he wants to talk about it, but I'm sure you can guess that there were some awards involved. And then, congratulations, again, our track team, those students are, some of them, a few of them are still competing and doing well. Hockey did well. I want to mention that our goalie, Ashton Machado, and I am a, the mother of a former, my son, one of my sons was a goalie, very stressful to be the parent of a goalie. Sometimes I sat out in the car and listened to the game instead of sitting in the bleachers, so I understand that. But Ashton is going to be recognized Tuesday, March 19th, during an intermission at the Boston Bruins game at TD Garden, so that's pretty exciting. Coach Rossi nominated and submitted on Ashton's behalf, so that will be really fun, I'm sure. I also want to mention, our very own John Newns is getting an award, along with our athletic director, Mr. Chris Affoley, for two different things. But he is going to be awarded, I'm sure you're not surprised, he'll be the recipient of the Joao Rodriguez Distinguished Service Award, which is given to a person who has distinguished themselves in volunteering their services to one or more schools in the district. So, congratulations, Mr. Newns, we're super proud of you and not surprised at all because we know how much you give of yourself to the Dartmouth schools. And guess what? The chess team is doing really well. Right, there are clubs out there that are doing other things that don't always get the recognition, but they are taking first and second place. Important things this week, for those of you who didn't get a chance to come and see what the high school students were doing, they were engaged in TED Talks, incredibly impressive. I had the opportunity to see some, and one of the things that I want to bring up that I think that is impressive in the community and people should celebrate, is that the students were covering important and relevant 21st century topics. And for, for me at least, and I'm sure some, many of you or most of you or all of you share my, just my optimism that hearing the things that the students are focused on in turn tells us that we have some great leaders that will be in the wings, and I think that that's really exciting for all of us. And in the same vein, we have a group of four students who just attended the MAS C Annual Student Conference. So, they, by all accounts, I talked to Mr. Shea today, said they were incredibly excited, they thought it was a wonderful experience, they got so much out of it. I think that it would be wonderful to invite them to School Committee to talk about what they learned and what their experiences are. And I just want to say that we celebrate all our students and recognize their accomplishments, and the reason that they're able to experience, have those experiences and be so successful is because of the educators here in Dartmouth who are supporting them every day. And I think it's important that we keep that in mind as we talk about budget, because there's a connection between what's happening and how students are being supported and the budget. And so, we, this last week, we had a family and caregiver forum, and that was designed to share with the community information about our schools. A lot of what we shared is part of the slide presentation that we've been sharing with you all year long, well, seems like all year long now, since December. And we want to thank the folks that came out. It wasn't a great night weather-wise, but we did have people show up. And we want you to know that your questions and your concerns are important to us, and we want to hear from you. And I want to also thank those people who watched from home, because apparently we had about 200, at least from last count, 237-plus viewers. So, even though people might not have wanted to come out, they weren't physically present, we did have interest in what we were talking about in relationship to the schools. And so, that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I was listening in the audience.
Thank you.
I happened to turn it on when Mrs. Dinesio started talking about the CPAC Parent Satisfaction Survey, so that was great. And they did pan to the audience, and it was nice to see some folks there. I was a little disappointed that it wasn't better attended, but it's nice to know that there were a couple hundred folks that were listening in. And not to really get into the weeds in this and talk about this now, but in listening to it, there were some feedback, and I appreciate everyone being so open and welcoming to the feedback that the community had. But there was one detail in particular that was alarming, and I just wanted to circle back to volunteers that we have in our schools, because there was a gentleman that stood up and he kind of like came close to violating some student privacy concerns. And as a family with, you know, I talked about my son and his complex needs, it just reminded me of how lucky I was back then to have always been met with educators who had empathy and compassion for his high-level needs and the challenges that that presented in the classroom. And I just wanted to make sure that as a district, I remember years ago at Quinn, they had a sort of like a parent onboarding training to sort of, and it talked about some of those privacy. You don't talk about students outside, right? Just like when you're in a HIPAA medical situation, you just don't talk about that. And we had almost a very close, close call with somebody coming in and identifying themselves as a volunteer in our, in our school. And I just hope that somehow we could circle back to that to ensure that that person realizes the error of their ways and that they should not be commenting on student needs out in public.
We recognize right away that we have some work to do, and we are in conversation about what steps that we'll be taking moving forward to making sure that we want volunteers in our schools. It's really important to us. Again, that helps to build a healthy community. And at the same time, the onus is on the district to make sure that as we invite folks into our schools, that we give them the information that they need so that they are well-prepared to understand what the responsibilities are when you're spending time in our classrooms. I also want to say that our kindergarten classrooms over at the Cushman School are wonderful places. I've certainly visited those classrooms. We have top-notch teachers in every one of those classrooms. There are support personnel in there supporting the students and the teachers, and I think that from my experience and from having conversation with teacher, the teachers there and certainly with Dr. Dale, those are really healthy, happy learning environments for our students.
Thank you for that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Newns talk about the great stuff with the music program. Funny enough, while I was watching the forum, I was at our youth athletes, rec athletes, boys and girls, I've had like a busy last couple of weeks. I think tonight is a clincher game with some eighth-grade boys and other teams, but I, on Sunday, I, with the chaos of all the wonderful stuff with the kids, you know, coming in finalists for some really cool statewide championships, I texted Mr. Newns, because I volunteered to help out with the music program. I texted him on Sunday to say, "I'm on my way to a game, my daughter won and shocking, they won and they were onto their championship game the next, or whatever." And he said, "Thanks, but it was last night." Note to self. Note to self, update your calendar. So I would love to hear from my.
We can, we can move on, you know, I'm good at adapting, believe me.
So I have nothing else, other than to turn it over to my colleagues, but Mr. Nunes, I'll point to you first to share.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, last Saturday in the rain that started about 3 o'clock or so, between noon time and 9:30, literally nine and a half hours. We had 53 groups between color guard and percussion go through this school type of deal. And they love coming here, because it's so wide open in how they do it type of deal. A junior varsity color guard, a varsity color guard, and our percussion all took first place in their class. So, I mean, it was good. Was a little challenging at the end with the rain type of deal, making sure that, you know, before they went, the groups went out, you know, sit tight, get, get the instruments covered, then go, you know, that, which they did, type of deal, so we did that. Our color guard is off to Bethlehem, Pennsylvania for regionals this weekend, so safe travels to them. Our percussion, I believe, next week is down in Tom's Rivers, New Jersey. So a couple of busy weeks. They were in Salem, New Hampshire Saturday, they took first place. They're in Cranston, the percussion is in Cranston, Rhode Island, Saturday night type of deal. One of the things too, and Dr. Saban McGuire was talking about it type of deal, but with the success that our athletic programs have had this year, so far with the fall and winter, with, you know, everybody getting into tournaments, the track team, and again, I totally understand, the track team is individual, but still, they're in there. I mean, we got one gentleman that has set school records, you know, you know, set a record and then broke his own record type of deal. Somewhere down the line, maybe we can get the captains into, you know,
That's a great idea.
On our behalf, recognize them type of deal, and our thanks to them for tremendous seasons type of deal.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea. We had a brief conversation about it, Mr. Nunes, and I did talk to Mr. Christopher Foley, and we are planning a date in April. I can't remember which school committee meeting it is, the date, off the top of my head, but we did pin down a date that we thought would most likely allow most of the captains to attend. So we had to look at sports schedules. Of course, of course, spring sports will be in full swing at that point. I, I also wanna acknowledge that when I announced your award, I forgot to announce your wife also received an award for volunteerism just this past weekend, just this past week, I think.
Thursday night.
Was it Thursday night?
Thursday night at the Fox concert.
And that was a wonderful, just wonderful. And so two people who give so much of themselves to Dartmouth. So congratulations on that too, but we will have the captains here.
And the last thing I have, just a thanks to Mr. Kylie for a great presentation to the capital planning committee last Thursday. I was fortunate enough, he let me sit in type of deal. It was, I thought, personally, I thought it was a good meeting, with some good questions asked. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah, I've not heard anything back yet, but I appreciate the support of having at least one friendly face there. Now, we, we certainly illustrated our needs to the capital improvement planning committee. They then go through a whole process and kinda let us know what they're recommending to the finance committee. I'll keep you posted once we hear something back, but as of right now, we have not. But we're hopeful, certainly, that it's gonna be a different outcome than what we, than last year, in which we received very little funding, so hopefully we do.
Excellent, anyone else have anything else to share?
That's it.
Great, with that said, our, the next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the school committee will be Monday, March 25th at 6 o'clock. And again, that will be the public hearing on the budget, which will be published separately and posted. And it'll be right here in the Dartmouth High School Library Media Center. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Oliver, we have a second by Vess Coughlin. Any discussion on this adjournment, no, all in favor?
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, 4-0. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.